Lots of messages from parents and such after Cuomo's talk, so fun times.
Tony, you got Bob Clark coming in?
Look at Mr. Dunn with the continuing the festivities and holiday spirit there.
I don't know how to remove it. I did a virtual for about 15 families and I'm generally not on Zoom, so I'll have Priscilla show me how to take it off tomorrow.
Oh, you just go to the stop video. There's a little arrow and you can get off of it.
Stop video?
Don't tell him that. Let's just let him go through the whole thing with it.
Oh, now he left. Oh, there he is again. Try to.
So we're on, we're on YouTube now.
Okay, I'll stop talking.
Well, hope not, Eric. We need you to still talk for something.
True.
But I guess let's, it's 5:04, 5:05 officially kick off this meeting. And I'm trying to get me a screenshot where I can see everybody is. Probably won't be able to do that with the screen sharing. Okay, so need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second, Marty.
Thank you, Marty. And I can't quite see everybody, so we'll do verbal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Hearing none, we will count that as seven oh. Say, I didn't grab a pen. Tim, are you able to take? Well, do we need another?
I am able to take notes unless you're going to hand over the meeting to me.
I'm gonna do that. So approval of the agenda is done, but the acting clerk is next. Let me see here. Anybody else have a pen? I cannot readily available.
I could.
I can.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve Marty as the acting clerk. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Damon, second. Thank you. Any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're missing Joyce, right?
Yes.
Oh.
So we're missing, is Damon here?
Damon's here.
Okay, so everybody's here. So seven oh.
I can't see everybody.
Right.
Well, because of the agenda, it's hard to get everybody on at once.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and so I, I mentioned at the last meeting, there we go. Thanks for stopping sharing, but I have the agenda pulled up. Resigning, I guess, is that what we call it for as board president? Because of that, we will need an election.
What, what are you doing? Wait, what, what's going on?
Yeah, stop it.
Be careful.
Yes, sir.
We do need a motion, or is that how it works, right, to appoint a new president of the school board?
Nomination.
A new nomination, yes. Do we have a nomination from the floor? Judy?
I would like to nominate Tim Sliz.
Does that require a second? I think it does.
A second.
Erica, second. Okay, any discussion or any other nominations on the floor? Seeing, hearing none.
Dave Dunn looks like he's in a pretty, pretty fun, fun location. I don't know.
The, the Polar Express.
Long story, David.
So all, I guess it was, if it's in favor, all voting for Tim Sliz as the new president of the Fairport Central School, this is school board.
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe I have to abstain on that vote.
Right. Any opposed? Now we will call it six oh with Tim abstaining.
Thank you for, thank you for, for putting your trust in me. I appreciate it.
With that election, yeah, oh, absolutely. With that election, then we need a vice president because you're no longer vice president then. So do we have a nomination from the floor for vice president? Joyce?
I'll nominate Marty Cardona.
What a selection. I will second that nomination. Are there any other nominations? No seen, hearing none, then ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. And working with Ariel, I have the oath of office with me. We can do it Zoom. You all will have to take it and sign the card anyway. So you're welcome to go in and we can just do, you can do it there in person. We can do it now if we'd like. I'm open for either that. Either way, Tim, I guess I hand off to you about what your preference is. I have the language if you want to move forward that way or whatever.
Um, I, I, either way, I can do it now if you'd like. Um, and then hand over the meeting to me. We can do it that way or we can, I can go into the office tomorrow and do it.
Well, you'll have to go in no matter what. My thought is in a public meeting.
Let's do it.
It's on Zoom.
Yep.
Right? So if you're ready, let me make sure I have it and you'll need to repeat after me. And then you can administer. Do you, should I forward this to you actually quickly? Just to, to Marty?
Yes, because I will be the president at that time.
Right, so I just forward it, but while it's going to you, Tim Sliz, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly swear that I will, will follow the Constitution of the United States.
Sorry, support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of president.
The duties of the office of president of school board, correct?
Yes, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. You would think I'd know that because I've been sworn in many times in other things, but.
Right, well, different title, but congratulations and thank you. And you can take it from here.
Thank you for all the three and a half years that you have put into the presidency of the school board, Peter. It has been a very interesting three and a half years. No one would have ever thought that you would have had to deal with what you have dealt with. And the way you've dealt with it with grace and tact has been fantastic. And I appreciate you and all the work that you do. And I appreciate the other board members for all the support that we have all been given. And we give each other. And with that, let me make sure I have that email that you just sent me, Peter. You sent it as an email, Peter?
Yes.
Did you send it? I'm thinking you sent it to my regular account. You did. Okay. Here we go. Marty.
Yes.
Done this before.
But I don't remember.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of vice president.
Of the school board.
Of the school board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's interesting because that's the same oath that every president, every elected official in this country takes. And it's a very simple oath. And it's interesting that, that it's the same no matter what public office we serve. With that done, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Support for students. We have some information that Brett, I believe you're going to share with us. This is particularly about students who are finding this manner of learning to be very difficult for many different reasons. And I know Brett that you wanted to get us up to speed a little bit on, on how your administrative team is working with our students that are struggling.
Thanks, Tim. And congratulations, Tim, and.
Thank you.
You didn't mention the part about emotional support for me when I call you and.
Oh, I'll learn that very quickly.
That's in the side note. But anyways, congratulations. I look forward to working closely with all of you. So there's, there's two parts to this conversation, you know, that will lead nicely into our conversation with Deb Miles in February, who is the director of student services. The first piece is what are we doing at each of our levels here? We have representation at elementary, middle, in ninth, our ninth grade building and our 10th through 12th grade buildings to support and connect with our students, not only academically, but socially, emotionally. As we know that that's a priority. They're doing some different things. They've rearranged some of their schedules and how they work in this, this remote hybrid world that we're, that we're living in. And also I think another part of this conversation, not to solve it, but just to start thinking about as budget season progresses, what are some high level thoughts that we should consider playing for as we transition to full time school in the fall or in the near future? So those are some big questions that we'll be grappling with, but I have the administrators here. You know, we'll, we'll volley it out there. We'll, just to keep it flowing, we'll, we'll start with elementary and then we'll progress up and see common themes and, you know, ask questions. It'll be a fluid conversation. Those two questions are just guide, guide rails, but it will go where it goes for the next half hour, 40 minutes or so. So Erin, want to start out?
Sure. Congratulations, Tim and Marty, and happy new year, everyone. Brett, thanks for inviting me to be here. Yeah, we are, we're very hopeful in 2021 that, you know, it may bring a return to some sort of normalcy back at school for us because it's, it's our belief that kids need to be in school. And at the elementary level, we're seeing, you know, at-risk students presenting in a bunch of different ways as you would expect, certainly academically, but socially and emotionally as well. And there's kind of an ebb and flow as families, you know, have, have gone through the time that we've been back in school, just depending on how COVID impacts each, each family in a different way. I'd say the key for us at elementary is certainly being in close communication with our teachers as they really have that direct pulse on their students because they're, you know, in the classroom with them so much. We utilize a bunch of different Google forms to gather in and pull information from our staff to, you know, generate concerns as well as, you know, being visible in the building to hear and interact, you know, with our staff and students. One of the things that we started at, over at Northside in November, we call it a hero homework club. And we've utilized our paraprofessionals in a different way. They've been, they've flexed their hours, so they're at school until four o'clock. So we have this club for students who really need additional support of an adult to either catch up on missed assignments. Maybe they were out for an extended absence. Or maybe they just do not have the support at home and of an adult to help them work through all the assignments in their Google classroom. So we have different cohorts of students, a cohort one homework club, a cohort two homework club, where students are staying after on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They work right alongside other adults. And working with partner, in partnership with Peter at transportation, we're able to provide transportation to students. So that's not an obstacle. And that's been something that's been very well received by families. And most importantly, our students, you know, just some comments that kids have made, you know, when they walk out, just, you know, have commented how good it feels to, you know, you know, I got five assignments done. I don't have so much work that I have to do on, on my own. And I think that's what we're seeing at elementary is there's, there's such a wide range in the amount of support that's being offered to our students at home. There, you know, some families that have, you know, both mom and dad right there to help their children with assignments. And we also know that we have a lot of elementary students who at, you know, eight, nine, and 10 are, are home alone during the days navigating through the Google classroom and the work on their own. Something else we did proactively was we assigned one of our mental health staff members to each classroom to really have a direct line of support so that if a question came up from a parent in need or for student or a teacher immediately needed assistance, they would know which mental health provider in our building was kind of, you know, their direct contact. And that's really just helped streamline a lot of things and make that support really immediately accessible to our teachers as well as to families as well. And I'm sorry, Brett, as I was talking, I saw your, your question pop up. So how, yeah, sure. How does our support team process and identify students? It's definitely driven by, by our teachers from what they are seeing and hearing and learning from our families. And it's, you know, they bring that to our attention quickly. We process that sometimes through our instructional support team. Or if there's an immediate need, you know, that's a conversation that we have. And then we work right along with the family to determine, you know, if, what, what kind of supports that they need. And in many cases, for some families, the homework club was exactly what they needed. So we're going to kick off our second session starting tomorrow. Actually, we have a few students who are continuing over from the first cycle and we have close to 35 new students that will be joining us starting tomorrow as well. So, you know, we have space for close to 50 students and it's something that we're looking to build momentum with. It's led by three of our very talented Northside teachers who service the facilities for that program as well. Those are just a couple of things. I also want to just highlight the great work our teachers are doing, especially our special education teachers who I feel over here are really exceeding what the virtual requirement would be in terms of contact, providing special education services in a, in a hybrid world, really going out of their way to set up additional meets and be responsive and accessible to students and families.
Erin, I know that a lot of times I'd have students who really could use the help of our mental health staff. You know, maybe on a Monday, Tuesday, then we come back on Thursday. With the kids only being in the building two days, is that creating a little bit of a, of a problem with those kids that really need that connection almost on a daily basis?
Definitely, Tim. I would say continuity as just the, for the elementary, elementary program as a whole, not just the academics, but the, the social emotional connections, the routines and, you know, structures of, you know, being in school. We are, we're definitely seeing that that is hard for students. And one of the reasons we really pressed over the summer not to be in school, Monday, Tuesday cohort one, Thursday, Friday cohort two, because of the even longer time away from being in like the normal school routine. So our mental health staff is setting up virtual visits for, virtual meets for students who need that extra support when they are home on their remote days to really promote that continuity with school.
Thank you.
One thing that we've talked about is the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday cohorts. When you're particularly dealing with a primary school or intermediate school student, when you say, hey, and it's Friday, let's talk about what happened on Tuesday, right? I mean, you do that for me, it's challenging. How was that gap? And I've talked to several teachers, you know, that's been a challenge.
It, it's absolutely a challenge, you know, in many ways, coming back after, you know, a 10 day break. You know, just getting everyone back in their routine, you know, returning, you know, back to, to school after a break is always, you know, there, there's a break in period or a return to schedule. But, you know, certainly seeing, you know, just some, a little backslide just in terms of process and procedures, you know, with our students. I, I say, you know, Wednesdays are something that, you know, we're, we're really talking over is what could a Wednesday look like for elementary, knowing that the greatest thing that we can provide for our students is, is FaceTime with teachers and, and staff here at school at the elementary level.
Erin, can you comment on what the other three elementary schools are doing or are they doing the same thing that you described?
Sure, yes. In terms of how they are soliciting information on their at-risk students, definitely working through that in a similar fashion. I know JA is getting their homework club. We all have, you know, different names for them up and running as well. And that is an idea that we've shared across, you know, the four buildings. Obviously with Dudley, that, you know, that looks a little bit different as well. But building onto students' existing school day is something that all three of the buildings with upper elementary students are discussing.
And Erin, what percentage of students are we talking about? Would you classify as struggling?
Struggling, I would say in, in different ways. So we have some students who are struggling academically, meaning they really just can't keep up with the, the two days of in-person and are struggling to complete, you know, assignments. I think we have definitely a smaller number of kids who are struggling socially, you know, and emotionally, just like making connections to the new schedule. But right now for us, I'd say our academic concerns are probably the greatest right now for us over at Northside. And I'd say we have about 75 students who we would put in that category. So we would be right around 670 if we were fully in person.
Erin, do you, is there any common metrics for those children? I'm sorry to call them metrics, but I mean, are they, are the parents struggling? Are they at daycare? Are they with their grandparents? Do they get the support at home? Or can you point to any common characteristics of the kids that are having problems?
Sure. Damon, I would really point to just that lack of adult support and guidance in managing the workflow through a Google classroom to then actually getting it completed. Many of the students, you know, their parents are working, so they are either at a YMCA type program at Carrington Rec. Or like I said, there, there are many students that I know that are just, they are just home, perhaps with an older sibling, you know, during the course of the day. So we really are finding it's that lack of having an adult who is, you know, working right along with them, you know, whether holding them accountable or encouraging them, helping them get the materials organized that many of these students are missing.
How are your virtual students doing?
Our virtual students, I will share that they are, they also participated in our first iteration of this club as well. So we did have eight virtual students who did access the, the homework club. And, and we're going to continue to expand on how we support our virtual students. We found though that supporting both the in-person students and virtual with the same set of adults at the same time really wasn't the, the best way to do that because being virtual, they really need a one-to-one or a two-to-one ratio to make it as successful as it can be. So we're looking to, you know, offer either earlier morning times or additional after-school times for our virtual students to access additional help from school.
Would you say the, would you say the percentage of virtual students struggling is, is similar to? Oh, it's fewer?
Yes, it's fewer.
Okay.
And we just had, I can just share for Northside, we just had five students return from full virtual programming to in-person hybrid model.
Okay.
And especially at third grade. We found the greatest swing for us was third grade students coming back into the building.
So the one thing, and this is for all grade levels, that we can all address, you know, and Erin touched on it. But how do you address this systematically so it's not based upon the goodwill or the advocacy skills of one staff member versus another one? Or one principal versus another? Like, I just, you know, I know that you mentioned the student support teams, Erin, you know, but do you feel like there is a way that we can systematically address it so it's not the, the most charismatic or the one who has, you know, your ear or, you know, how do we make sure that the equity and that advocacy is, is tried and true?
I, I think the key, and I, and I would feel all my colleagues are absolutely doing this, but I think it's the importance of the conversations with our, with our teachers and our staff. They have the, you know, the best pulse, you know, on their kids. And I think it's being in their rooms, I think it's being visible. I think it's having a lot of opportunities for, you know, conversations and, and making, you know, our staff aware of the extras that we can provide and really cutting out like the red tape or the paperwork, you know, that would prevent, you know, someone submitting or IST referral. I see that, you know, really as, as our work here in the main office of, of just making it happen and getting kids into the supports that they need to support our staff.
Hey, Brett or, or, you know, just the administrators, has there, I know that, you know, when we're all live, well, my kids went to East Rochester, right? One of the, one of the nice aspects of East Rochester was it was a K through 12 campus. So they had a lot of older kids in the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, sort of tutoring the younger kids after school. They, they'd pay like, I don't know what they paid, but so my kids, as 11th and 12th graders, their after-school job for like four or five hours a week was to mentor or tutor younger kids that needed that support. You know, with the, with the fact that we're virtual, I think we've removed the physical limitations of, of making that connection. But I mean, is that something that we've thought about in terms of linking some high school kids together with younger kids for sort of an after-school type of mentorship or helping with homework?
Enter Ms., Mrs. Watt and Mrs. Marutter.
Great ideas.
Yeah, go ahead, Leanna. I'm going to fix my camera. Sorry, Leanna told me my camera's not off, but it's, is my camera's off, but it's telling me like my video's playing, so.
I thought it was New York Giant shame.
Do you, do you have?
No, I'm, I'm not an, I'm not an Eagles fan, so I would, you know, display myself proudly here in my office.
That's messed up, Erin Marutter. I heard that.
Do you have something blocking the camera?
No, I'm going to mute and try and figure this out for you.
Call, call your IT professional.
There we go.
There it is.
So, um, I guess Damon, to answer your question, what we have done for the entire month of December and will be continuing on into the month of January is every Wednesday, we have roughly 70 high school students who are meeting midday with elementary students from all of our elementary buildings. So we solicited student volunteers at the high school and then used sort of the recommendations from our elementary colleagues and the teachers that they worked with and recommended students who could benefit from making that connection. And primarily what our students are using that time to do is to do read-alouts with the students. And some cases, they sort of eased into it by doing a little bit more like getting to know you stuff, activities, brain breaks, things like that, just to kind of develop a relationship and a connection. But certainly are trying to make use of that time to work on the social emotional connectivity piece with some of these kids who are a little bit disengaged and give them somebody to, to kind of connect with midday. But also to try to work on some of, you know, the literacy skills, you know, that are important to them and that they might not get that direct connection on a, on a Wednesday in the middle of the day like that.
Yeah, cool. That's great. And that's all, that's all virtual, Leanna?
Yeah, it's all virtual. So they all have individual links that they jump into. Student and the both high school and elementary students. So I periodically jump into those myself to kind of observe and see what's going on. And really, really good feedback across the board from our students and from the elementary students. It's not, we don't always make a connection, right? Sometimes there's hiccups, but by and large, it's been a really positive outcome.
Yeah, great. That's, that's awesome.
And, and Damon, in the past, we've always had a high school peer tutoring program.
Yep.
So, and that's always been, this, in 30 years I've been teaching, we've always had high school students hooking up with lower grade students just as, as a buddy system, but also helping with homework in the library or something like that.
Like from what Erin was talking about, and I think that's probably obvious, but, but the lack of that connection with the little kids with an older individual is really a big part of what's missing. And the fact that they can have that sort of mentor relationship with a high school kid kind of gives them that, that, you know, brotherhood, sisterhood connection between generations of, of kids. And then if they can help a little bit on reading or arithmetic or whatever, that just gives them a little bit more structure that I think is really good. It's good for the old ones too, right? So that's great.
I, and it's, and it's, it goes beyond the pandemic too, because so many students in our district are, they have one sibling who might be only a year apart. So those of us who grew up with five or six kids in our family, we know what it's like to have an older brother and a younger sister or things like that. A lot of our kids don't have that. And this is just a great opportunity for kids to experience that, 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 that way of life, which I think is great.
Yep.
Are the high school students, kids who just volunteered to do this, are they also kids that gain from this when you said they, you know, they might not be engaged? Are any of the high school students in that situation? Are they volunteers that just want to be doing something additional?
Mostly it's volunteers who really saw themselves as a good fit for that and were interested in connecting that way because they enjoy doing it during Brotherhood/Sisterhood Week and feel like it's a good fit. But in some cases, there are definitely students who fit both, both bills there, right? Who are also kids who we worry about. And we know that this is a good positive thing for them to do. And, and we had kind of two groups of kids, a group that was very independent and totally knew what to do and could run with an activity. And another group of kids who were like, I'm interested in this, but I need some help planning what this should look like. Right? So we supported that group of kids to make sure that they really felt comfortable and confident. It's actually funny, so many of them have gotten a taste of what it's like to teach virtually, like what their teachers are experiencing and some of the frustrations and the kids showing them their pets and the, you know, all those kinds of things. And being a little distracted. So it's been interesting.
Sounds great.
It's probably interesting too, because they're seeing each other in their home environment. And that's something that most of the peer connections we've had in the past have always been in school somewhere, in a library or in the classroom. That's totally different.
Brett? Be optimistic and pessimistic at this. Not, I'm not trying to be both at the same time, but I'm not sure I can be totally optimistic. but I'm not sure I can, uh, be totally optimistic, hoping that we start school normally next school year, but looking down the road and believing that our gaps that some students have will continue to widen, hopefully at a slow pace. But just making that assumption, what is it that we need to start planning for during our budget season to help, you know, ameliorate some of the challenges that have been created for our students during this pandemic year? What, what is it we need to do next year to help close those gaps again, especially the academic ones? Maybe social, emotional and others? You know, that, is it a one-year expense? Is it a multi-year, three or four years? What, what is it we need to be thinking about?
Are, are you doing that at the elementary level or are you, um, are you working your way up still?
Well, it's a question for everybody, I suppose, but we're at the elementary level. But each level, I suppose, you know, that question's going to apply.
Sure, sure, Peter. I'll be so bold as to, as to go first. Um, you know, one of the things we have discussed, you know, um, at the elementary level, and again, certainly needs more development, would be the, um, possibility of expanding the summer school programming. Um, currently, summer school programming is up through grade three for general ed students, and then at grades four and five, um, it is for students to receive special education services. Um, so the possibility of, you know, it's, it was the word of 2020, but I'll throw it out again. You know, reimagining, you know, what our summer school programming looks like to possibly include more students. Maybe it doesn't just have a focus on academics and their social emotional pieces that are, you know, intentionally built in as well. It's something that, you know, we've kicked around at elementary.
With, because it's summer school, one, warmer weather is always good. We can keep windows open, we can get outdoors, we have all the buildings more available. Is this something we can do 100% in person then? And that, that helps bridge the gap more quickly? Is, is that the thinking potential?
Yes, it, it would be the hope that it would be in person to start to, you know, just acclimate kids to a, you know, five days a week, taking advantage of our outdoor and green space as well, so that there's some play and recess, you know, built into the, even a more morning program as well, with the possibility of, you know, maybe each of the buildings hosting their own, you know, summer school program.
That's a, that's an important caveat. If you take a look at how it's done right now, it's a, it's a district-wide and it only gets, you know, X amount of students. But you just heard Aaron say there's 75, you know, that she's probably, you know, that could go either way. That need continuity, that need a less of a transition in the fall. They don't need to start again, you know, if they're a JA student, you know, if summer school is at Northside, it really doesn't help them get acclimated. So, you know, there's a cost center there in having it be at each school. But what it would do to a transition and getting them to feel comfortable and, you know, this is just an ongoing part of, you know, their program would be a little bit more seamless and palatable. I know that they've been talking about it and we'd want to get staff involved, you know, to talk more about it, especially as we go towards budget.
Yeah, love it. Can we, can we staff summer school at each building?
Yeah, would we have staff that would want to do that?
Well, those are, those are the questions, and I know that Aaron said it was a higher level, you know, thought. And, um, it would need to be developed with staff and to understand what, what we can, what would be our threshold. And it would be great if it was Fairport teachers, um, you know, we would love to have them part of it. And I know that, you know, there may be interest there as well. I've heard it many different times.
And, and in the past, the elementary has been primarily focused on the math and the reading, correct, Aaron?
Correct, yeah.
And, and, and I think this year might be, it may have to be broadened as to, as to what the necessary needs of students are.
Right. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm just thinking, yes, when you say broaden, like potentially like a star program that's offered at a middle school with the idea that there's a theme with activities, you know, built within it. And yes, there's academics, but academics becomes, you know, a piece of the, what the offering.
You know, it's the social, emotional, it's the organization, it's the, the, uh, just getting up on time. And, you know, there's so many differences, because right now our students are, are getting up to be on the bus only two days a week, where the, the third and fourth day, they're not doing anything. They don't need to get up to get on the bus. Wednesday, they get up, but it's at a later time. So just something that, that's simple for our little five and six and seven-year-olds will be a, a new change. And, and, and in, um, touring Brooks Hill, uh, the couple of weeks before the Christmas break, it was very interesting, because as I'm watching the kindergartners, I'm, to them, this is all new. This is, this, they don't know any different. So our kindergartners are, are very, okay, this is what school is, which, which is good to see. Even our first graders are, are, are that way too, because kindergarten was, it's, they don't, don't really hit a taste, but they really, and, and the, the taste was a half a year, if you will. So, um, it'll, it'll be interesting to see how different age groups, you know, like Dom, your group at Minerva, and then Pat and Dave, your groups at, at the middle schools, and obviously Bob, totally different to see how this all will flesh out as, as we move back to a, a more in-person.
Yeah, I was going to ask, are we going to hear from middle school, ninth grade and high school too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, hey, one, one question Stevens is, um, uh, obviously state aid on, on running a summer school like that? Would we get any aid from New York State?
Uh, we, what we do get aid on is our special needs summer programming, but other than that, we fund the program.
Okay.
Hey, we're, we're hoping we get just, just state aid.
Yeah.
But that. Usually we, usually we've supported it with our title grant. Is how we've supported the some, some, uh, portion of the summer school. But any, any, um, any program we put on that can't qualify for that type of funding, we have to fund it.
That feeds into what's happening in Georgia, um, this week, right? Um, that speaks to, you know, monies that may or may not be available. Hopefully some academic pieces would bridge the gap. We can't count on it, but hopefully, um, you know, we'll be watching that with a high levels of interest. I'm interested in what's happening at the high school and middle school, um, in, in the realms of both, what are we doing to support and connect with students? But also what are some high-level thoughts that we should consider as we, um, do budget planning?
Dave and Pat?
Hey, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. Uh, you know, Dave and I have tried to be in sync with a lot of the things we're trying to do. And, uh, you know, I'll start by saying, you know, we try to identify most kids right through our teams. You know, our teachers are working together, uh, daily to make sure they're finding out like who's doing what, both with our virtual kids and our hybrid kids. When they meet together, you know, that's where we can find out if a kid's struggling, say, just in an English class or if it's kind of across the board. Um, when that happens and we find out it's more than just one little academic hiccup, you know, they get working with our counselors and Becky and I to try to find out what's going on and what next steps could be. You know, we have seen a lot more this year of kids that are kind of across the board, not doing well. Um, you know, and in my building anyway, you know, you know, our virtual kids, I think are the ones that are struggling the most. You know, we're losing some of those kids that, that aren't in at all. And we're, we're having tough times getting a hold of parents and what are they doing at home? And, uh, that part's been really difficult to try to pin down and try to help because either we're not getting calls back or we're not connecting. Uh, we've done more home visits at this point in this year than I've ever done in my career, like throughout a whole year, um, which I know is kind of across the board for a lot of us. And, um, we've tried, our, our number one thing we've been trying to do with those virtual kids, we've been trying to get them back in the building since kind of day one for the kids that we can, because we know when we're, we're, our kid, teachers are seeing them and talking to them, they're making a much better impression and got their hands literally on them as opposed to, you know, through the computer. Um, we, in addition to Wednesdays, where we've been bringing kids in, every Wednesday, we're averaging in the 20, 25 kids on the Wednesdays coming in for a couple hours to work, uh, with our paras and some of our teachers that are in the buildings. Um, our reading teachers have done what we call them virtual guided study halls. So students are out on those remote days, it's a time to check in in the morning, kind of plan their day. Um, you know, so the parents, you know, when we talk to them about, you know, this amount of time should be done on each subject. It's a way that we can like literally have the kids write it down. This is what I'm doing, this is what I'm doing, my English, I'm going to this class now. We've also been doing our, you know, after those 10 weeks came out, um, our failure reviews. We had our, you know, all of us, I think we had our giant list of kids that we kind of looked at, do that comparison about where they're at and why they're struggling. Um, you know, and that takes a lot of different forms between our special ed groups, you know, with what's happening there. Our, you know, echo what Aaron said about our teachers doing a fantastic job about trying to keep the kids connected, either in school and out, our, you know, our resource kids and teachers, they work together every day. You know, hopefully usually five days a week, we have it built in the kids' schedule or even on the hybrid students, uh, when they're not in, they can try to get resource on those days where they're home with their teachers. Um, and just trying to find ways to get through our communications through the roof with families, both from teachers, mental health staff and administrators. Um, and our, our biggest, my biggest struggle is that, that home connection, meaning some kids aren't having parents work with them or around them at all. You know, they're home alone, uh, they're watching younger siblings. Um, and a lot's not happening on some of those off days. And that's what we've really, really been trying to target is those remote days for the hybrid kids and our virtual kids, what are they doing every day?
Yeah, I, I know, I know our students who get the support from our English language teachers. Uh, I know in the beginning, a, a lot of those families have chosen to go the full remote. Um, have, has that changed? Are those students, uh, struggling more than, than the rest of the population who don't get the support from the English language teachers?
Yeah, you know, it's tough. Like, we did a good job bringing a lot of those kids back. And then kind of right around Thanksgiving, we had another rush of a lot of them wanting to go virtual in our ELL community. And, um, you know, we've done a couple almost, I call them hybrid hybrids with, like letting them go virtual for a week or two to let things settle down and try to convince the parents the best place for them is in school. Because a lot of that was driven out of, not because of something happening, but just as a fear of something happening. And that's why, you know, the, the good thing about when we had to do those tests, you know, last month and all that, it was really good to be able to talk to parents with real data saying, we're not having it here in school. The kids are safe, we're doing the right things, let us work with the kids. And, uh, but Tim, those kids are definitely struggling if they're not in the building. No doubt, no doubt, our kids especially, they're a real, real high risk of, you know, I don't want to say not motivated, but it's tough to communicate and go from there and get them really what they need when they're kind of just logging into some of the classes. And, um, we, again, our guys have done a really good job of trying to that outreach with those families to try to make sure they know the best place for them is in school.
Are you seeing a, a, a difference in, um, students struggling among the grade levels? Is, are this eighth graders more than the seventh or is it pretty even?
You know, we're, we're still, like, it's really hard as, as everyone can attest to the new students, we're still struggling to get to know our sixth graders the best we can, like how they learn, what works for them, what goes there and that. The two days a week's been tough on everybody, teachers especially, about trying to really find that time to dig in with those individual kids, about what works best for them. And, uh, I will say our futures, that's why they love the Wednesdays almost too, because they can see the kids, even if though it's in this format with, without masks on, talking to them, like kind of getting to know them a little bit. And, uh, I, I'd say it's across the board though, Tim. Like, I, I wouldn't say like sixth grade's worse than seventh grade or eighth grade. I would say it's the kids that we knew were going to struggle in any environment. I don't want to say are taking advantage of it, meaning literally like, ha ha, this is my way out. But they'll find a loophole and like, oh, I didn't know it was assigned or, oh, I had the wrong link or my computer didn't work. And, uh, um, for those of you guys that don't know, we have a, you know, a program called Aristotle. I know the admins do. You know, we just take, we use our school computers and they're either typing in some inappropriate phrases or searching some inappropriate sites, we get notified as administrators. And today, I'm literally on the phone with a parent as they're talking about, they're saying, hey, my son's laptop's not working, that's why he wasn't in class today. And literally as that's talking, I'm getting an Aristotle warning pop up from that kid that he's visiting some website. So I'm like, well, it's definitely working, the internet is working. And, uh, I talked to the, the website the kid was on. So the, the kids are finding ways and we're, we're trying to do things to support parents and give them some links about how to like, like Aaron said, how to use Google Classroom so they can check what's going on, how to make sure they're logging on School Tool to see what the kids haven't turned in, even though they're telling their parents they have turned things in. So we're trying to parent outreach as much as possible. And even some, we're thinking about sending out like a School Tool, School Tool, School Tool tutorial for the parents to get, make sure they're checking that day to day, uh, five-week or 10-week grade.
And, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll ditto a lot of what Pat and Aaron said. Uh, we're pretty much doing a lot of the things that JP's doing with trying to reach those friendly learners. Um, I know, I know Double at some point will talk about the sources of strength, but we do the emotional screeners, uh, sixth, eighth and 10th grade. And we just, we just got the results back before break. And we compared our current eighth graders to, uh, what they did in sixth grade, their, their testing scores. And pretty similar, there was not a significant increase. Uh, pretty much it was almost a decrease from sixth to eighth. Uh, we got our brand-new sixth grade scores, okay? Now, we don't have data from fourth grade, but we got our sixth grade scores off the charts. So we are very, very, very concerned about the number of kids, uh, presenting themselves with high levels of anxiety based on this screener. And I think a lot of reasons for that, lack of closure in fifth grade, right? Lack of closure. Um, I met with our counselors today and they are a huge strength for us because we're counselor-based at the grade levels. Uh, each counselor's got three-year, uh, tour of duty with their kids, so they know these kids very, very well. And we're having a, a lot more family, a parent meetings that we've had in the past, a lot more counseling referrals outside of Fairport for parents, every grade level. The counselor said, I'm referring parents because the, the, the needs are significant. Uh, and a lot of this is connected with the isolation that the kids are experiencing. Um, and Aaron hit it on the head in terms of the, the students that are having a hard time in disengaging, it's the lack of parent structure. I had a dad call me today and say, you've got two kids in our building, I think you've got one kid in the other van. He goes, my tax season is starting right now, I'm not going to have a lot of time. Do you have a tutoring service that I can call to help them manage my kids? Now, at least he was honest, right? But I think that's what's missing with some of these kids is just that the good parenting to help organize their day, help them structure their day. And, you know, maybe, maybe something they'll think about as a, as a parent forum, uh, where we have it maybe school-based or grade-level band-based, so we can bring parents in and, and really help them help their kids, because it's really not their kids' fault, uh, for, in so, in some respect. Um, we're finding that the kids struggle the most when they're remote, when they're home. But when they're here, that they're engaged, they're participating, that's when they're home and, and in many cases by themselves all day, uh, they, they freeze, they just freeze. And, uh, I've had parents tell me, I know my kids are capable of doing the work, but they're refusing not to do the work. And, and I think that's, that's not just a matter of being, being reluctant. I think they're, they're frozen at some level, again, only coming two days out of five. We've got our A-级 asset leaders that we're doing some peer mentoring with them, with our sixth and seventh graders, just having them remote, work with them through Google Meets, just on the executive stuff, organization, how to get into Google, the Google Meets, how to submit, you know, an, an assignment and have it be complete. So we're starting small with about eight peer ambassadors and hopefully going to have that grow. So it's some peer-to-peer within our own building. Um, just going back to the summer school, I know that busing typically has never been a part of summer school programming. Yeah, I, I understand why, but if we are going to look at some summer school programming, uh, I think the busing needs to be part of it. Because again, that, that's the population that we need to make sure come to our schools. I love the school-based, even if it's a, a band-based programming. And, um, even if it's for three or four weeks, if it's short, if money's going to be an issue. But I really feel that there's a population that we're going to need to reach over the summer. And it can't be through buses, because buses ends up canceling some of the classes at the middle school anyway. Um, but our team, our team environment has really been, been, been supportive. Uh, the, again, these teachers are meeting together and, uh, same hundred kids. Our SST every Wednesday, uh, problem solving, you know, four to five kids and, uh, in a, in a team problem-solving format to see what we can do. Uh, we've been lucky, like all the other schools, we're getting parents to come back to hybrid. Uh, we started that process, uh, almost a month and a half ago, and we just got two more kids back. Parents are realizing this is not working, it's just not working for their kid. And they're also being reinforced by the fact that our schools are safe. Um, so that, that's helped with some of our, our virtual kids that just were, were struggling. Um, but that, you know, I, I think our counselor-based supports that we're providing to our parents and to our teachers, as well as the, the work from our administrators has been helpful. We got a lot of work.
Are, are the two of you, and actually all the administrators, are you finding it more difficult to really identify students who have significant learning disabilities at the moment? Because of all that they're going through? I can imagine your SST meetings must be really difficult to really hone in on those kids that have significant, true areas where their learning is, is, is impacted, not because of this, but just because of who they are? Is, is that something that all of you administrators are, are discovering? Or, I mean, I, I can just imagine what it's like to try to weed through all this to get to the real root cause of a lot of the, the issues that some of our kids are dealing with, right?
Tim, I, I'll share with everyone that we have had a record number, um, 15-plus parent referrals to the Committee on Special Education. Those are referrals generated by parents. Those are referrals generated by parents. Um, and the majority of them to date have resulted in us not classifying the students. So to your point, it is teasing out. What is, you know, developmentally, there are a third grader who's eight years old. And you know, was out of schooling in a school routine, you know, for, for six months. That's a lot of what we are sorting through. It's, it's proving to be very difficult. Um, and you know, families are genuinely concerned, but that is something we are definitely working through here.
Erin, I would agree. Um, we haven't had the same influx of parental referrals. Um, but certainly um, the number of, um, you know, that, that concern that you're talking about Tim teasing out, like what is the root of it? Absolutely is a regular conversation through SST. And again, that's special agenda. That's across the board. Um, but thankfully we have so many interventions along the way that help us to kind of figure out what it is exactly that's going on, whether that's it, you know, counseling support, whether that's, you know, all the other things folks here have listed academic supports to help students. Um, and in a lot of ways it's trying to reassure parents that this is not an isolated situation in their house. Every single family is experiencing this to, to some extent. Um, in varying degrees. And so trying to provide that parental support, to be honest. And, and sort of sharing these experiences and, and normalizing it to an extent, not to do nothing about it, but to normalize it and make sure that they too feel supported in the steps that they're taking to try to make this work for their household.
Real quick to that point, uh, Tim, we, we don't really classify a lot of students at the high school level anyways. Um, we have, we are more prone to like the acute mental health, um, interruption, which causes the, the, you know, the, the referral to the committee. But I think to your point, long-term, I could see that being more of an issue as there are more skill gap developed along the chain. Because most of the kids come to us, we, we're more and more on the other end of the spectrum where we are declassing students, uh, preparing them for that transition to college or um, to the workplace, et cetera. So I, I think that as you move along the transitions, you know, Dave will see more coming up from the elementary schools and, and Pat. And then we'll, we might see more down the road, uh, when we have a better idea of how much uh, skill gaps there are. Parents will, will refer more and ask, they might not be a true deficiency, but those gaps will be present.
Which is still happening. We're still declassifying students, right? That's, that's still something where we're seeing those successes and students really not requiring that level of support anymore.
I see a, a, a big, a big funnel problem here because we have, we have skill gap at the elementary schools and there's three of those and skill gaps to the middle schools and there's two of those. And then they all go to the ninth grade and there's one of those, right? So Dominic, you're, you're going to be seeing all of them together. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a problem. And I, and I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. I, I will, I will comment though, that, you know, we hear a lot of pressure from the community and I'm sure Brett hears, or you guys hear more than anybody. That parents want their kids back in school every day and it's not without good reason, right? Because there's a, there's a problem and I, I would hope that there's an appreciation for teachers and for connections with kids. Because we're really seeing the, the product right now of the lack of connection and the lack of, of time with teachers. Um, I realize that from a health pandemic perspective, that's not possible, but as much as we can do to sort of fill those gaps, I think that's the issue because what, you know, again, whether it be socio, you know, a me- a mental, emotional or academic behavioral issue, it all boils down to having that connection with an adult teacher, right? That's the root cause of everything here and, you know. So the ways we can think about creatively mentoring children with other students or, you know, other ways to make those connections. I think that's the key. Then we just do the best we can. But there is an immense amount of pressure coming from lawyers in the community, demanding that we sue the governor, right? We're not going to do, but.
Uh, I, I just want to throw one thing in too, just to build on. It, it talks about budget a little bit too, but like Leanna said, you know, we use a lot of things to try to mitigate that. Not going to CSE, you know, in middle school, we use math labs, in lit labs and some guided study halls that we use for our general ed kids. You know, try to help them along the way before we get there. And that's where I see we may need some, some support in that. Like our numbers may grow in that a little bit more. You know, after the end of this year, just because of like we said, our sixth graders missing out on that fifth grade and then our sixth graders missing on that, we might see that a little more. And you know, David, your point, we, Dave and I want to make sure we're trying to send the same kids that are ready for that high school jump when they get up to Dom and Minerva and onto the high school. So that's, I think we're going to see some of those gaps, you know, when we do some of our math testing and all that. I think we're going to start seeing some more spaces in there that we might need to try to fill. Um, without having to go to CSE, without even doing that process, say, let's, let's try this first. Let's see what we can do. And try to address that issue. But I don't know, I have those numbers yet, obviously where the kids are all at, but we know there's going to be some gaps, so we got to try to plug in.
You know, one thing that we talked about in addition to those pieces, um, are the, the activity pieces. We talked about, we know, what do we do during lunch supervised, um, play playgrounds so kids can be out there, stretch their legs, run around, because we don't, we're not going to get it all done in, in one year's time, right? I mean, we have months and months, years and years of work, you know, to fill in those gaps, but we want to keep them whole. We want to focus on the, the social, emotional and physical components. But that piece Peter speaks into, you know, we need staff to monitor and watch and support. Um, navigate, you know, the, the playground. But that's a real cost.
Brett, just one comment on the connection with teachers and students. And obviously we know that that's been a trademark in Fairport. These masks, right? And this pandemic has really squashed the whole teacher student connection. I've got some of the best teachers that uh, they can't get these kids to talk. And I'm in a math classroom, uh, a period a day, uh, one day a week and I, they, I, not me, they're not talking with the teacher. Uh, these masks have, have kind of put a damper on teacher student conversations. Um, so I don't know how we're going to, you know, and I don't think that's just Fairport, right? I think that's, that's all over the country. Um, so we continue to really work that teacher connection. Our clubs have had some success because they're outside the classrooms. Um, and kids are enjoying being together with their, with their friends outside the classroom. But you, you come into any of our schools and I'll speak to just mark the ground, our kids are exceptionally quiet in class and almost scary, right? And even our lunch rooms. Um, I almost like it when a, a kid's, you know, sent out of the office, you know? Um, because they're too quiet either the lunch. So part of it is just the pandemic, part of it is these masks. Because I think it does squash some of that intrinsic student teacher con- uh, connection.
Yeah, if I, if I could just jump in there, you know, I, number one, I appreciate everybody's leadership. Um, I think we're all losing sleep over losing kids and disengaged kids and uh, we don't want to lose any of our kids. So I appreciate you being here on a, uh, this evening. Um, Tim, Marty, congratulations. Peter, thank you for your leadership. It's been uh, quite a year and it's going to take all of us to get through the rest of this year. So with regards to the ninth grade, I, I am, you know, I echo a lot of what's already been said. I don't presume to think that ninth grade is more important than any other grade. But the research is statistically more kids drop out in ninth grade than any, any, any other grade nationally. So I take that to heart. And now with the, the situation right now, we've got a lot of kids that are uh, at risk of dropping out right now. There's 25 kids that are failing. For, you know, frankly, there's 90 kids that are failing two or more classes in Minerva to land right now. There's 25 kids we've targeted through our weekly. Um, RTI processing and SST processing. 25 kids that I'm really concerned about that we're, we're just not going to get back. So we're working tirelessly to address that on, on multiple levels. So um, like everybody else, ever six, 12, we have our Wednesdays, we're bringing kids in for uh, guided study halls on Wednesdays, which has been very helpful. Um, we have afters, we're promoting after school. Some pages, a lot of it's just communication. Some parents don't realize their students virtually can stay after school with a teacher and set up those appointments. I had a conversation with mine, I realized you're doing after school. Like, yeah, we are, we, we gotta get them connected. We are, we started, we, we, I did a holiday help session over the break. So I stole the idea uh, from Doug Law, from Miranda Coy. Basically we brought in 25 kids over the break on Wednesday, kind of like guided study hall, but we had teachers working with them. So we had four teachers and 22 students getting some extra help on that Wednesday, which was great. But that's like a short-term Band-Aid for kids that are struggling. It's like a life preserver. I kind of put it that way. Um, again, home visits are through the roof. Um, trying to connect with kids. Even the kids that aren't failing, school isn't fun, right? So our kids that are doing pretty well, they're your AP kids that are pretty successful, they're passing their classes. I think we're starting to lose some of the steam with them because school's not fun. So we're trying to connect with them in different ways. Through, you know, my silly podcasts, through, um, if you hear about teachers playing video games with students, that's because I'm, I got a little thing going in January called Level Up Log In. So the goal we're going to, we have a building-wide goal of remote engagement, which we're going to measure from our teachers. And if we accomplish that as a building, we're going to set up an, an among us video game extravaganza and live stream it with students and staff playing the game together. It's not going to happen during instructional time. It'll happen during the, the break in on a Wednesday, a virtual Wednesday. Um, so we're trying different ways to connect with kids and, and it's been really fun because that team that I put together to create that program is students and staff working together. We've got two new, besides our clubs, two new leadership teams. One I call the SAT student, uh, student uh, academic team. Um, and one is an SLT, so student leadership team. One is focused on academics and one is focused on cultural pieces like cultural responsiveness. So we're trying really hard to give them a purpose and, and engage them with those relationships. So we're providing opportunities and those are all great things and they're helping. We're getting kids back in person more here and there. But there, as we know, as we're talking about, there's going to be long-term budgetary. We, we just need staff, quite frankly. I know certain classes are getting smaller in the district, but we're going to need staff to address those remedial pieces. And I'm working a lot with our, our teachers are exhausted, our counselors are exhausted, our administrators are exhausted. So, um, but we're doing a lot of philosophical work on grading practices, you know, is it, is there any such thing as late work or the focus is engagement? And mastery instead of when that assignment was turned in. So there's going to be remediation needs, but I don't want to lose kids between now and June. Um, when we could maybe re-envision some of our grading practices or how we're applying old practices. I just see a ton of ninth grade gets hit hard because that gap, middle school to high school is, is a big transition, you know, it's hard. And now they didn't have three months of their eighth grade year. So I think Minerva's getting hit harder than, than others, I would guess, not knowing other buildings. So I'm concerned and those are a, a couple of quick pieces. One last thing. I don't know what the conversation is with Wednesdays, but if we can bring six, 12 kids in every other Wednesday, like cohort A, you're in this Wednesday, cohort B, you're in this Wednesday. That would be huge. The more we can get them in front of our teachers, um, the better. So, um, I don't know. Dom, I.
Yeah, universal applause to that. I, I maybe not quite universal, but a lot of shaking of heads down to that. I mean, do we? But I'm not sure there's support from the staff in how.
Peter speaks to their conversation that we were having this morning. Before we engage in that, it can't be in the middle of a spike, you know, um. Secondly, we talked about, you know, what are the medical professionals saying? What are staff saying? What's our administrators saying? So you know, I, I said within a week's time, I'll be getting groups together just to start getting those details and, you know, bringing people to the table on that conversation. But you know, at this point in time, um, we're all excited about the prospects of that, but I, I think we need to make sure they're being thoughtful and methodical and making sure that all the right voices are part of the conversation. Um, so we have our facts straight and we don't do it too soon, um, but definitely not in the middle of a spike.
Um, you know, Min- Minerva in our district is always a, has always been a unique situation because it's where our students finally come together as one group, as a, as a, as a whole class. Um, obviously this being your first time in that position, um, as, as the leader of that building. I'm just concerned that because they're, they're co-horted, that we are going to find this particular group of students who you have right now in Minerva is going to have a more difficult time coming together as a cohesive group. Uh, I'm, I'm just because like you said, they didn't have March 16th on for the rest of their eighth grade group with their, with their eighth grade kids that they've been with six, sixth and seventh grade. And now they're coming together as a group, but they're only seeing half of a half. So I, I'm just, you know, when, when they get up to Leanna and Bob, next year I can see where, where they almost have to run 10th grade as a ninth grade, because that's the first time they really will all be together, hopefully in September.
I mean, I think there, it was a struggle for last year's ninth grade group as well, though.
Right, right, right. Two, two groups.
Well, I, I think there's two components to this. I think there's, you know, the social emotional component, which is probably the most important. But then there's also bringing in our directors and our lead teachers to the conversation to look at the curriculum maps. And we need to adjust them, you know, where do they end up? Um, we don't know what's happening with Regents exams. Uh, I have an inkling that AP exams will be alive and well, you know, so that's going to add to the, the stress going forward too. So, um, um, it's just, you know, bringing the right people to the table and planning accordingly and doing it intentionally. But you talked about budget, Peter, to your question, that's a budget cost right there is bringing staff in. Um, making sure that it's intentional work. So when we do come again in the fall, we're ready to take them where they are and, and move the curriculum, um, and also the social emotional curriculum. Bob, Bob, Leanna, any, any thoughts, um, as we, as we close here?
Yeah, I, I really don't want to take too much of your time because honestly, um, I could repeat pretty much everything that Aaron and, and Pat, Dave and, and everyone has said, um, including Dom. So, um, just a couple of things to point out, and then I would turn things over to Leanna, because I'll be honest with you. She's been the architect of a lot of the systems that have fallen in line for the entire district with regards to supporting students. Um, we've been bringing students in on Wednesdays since the third week of school by design and using the systems that we had in place. Um, there was a question earlier about how we are teasing through like I'm making sure it wasn't just the squeaky wheel. And I think that one of the ways that, um, Leanna and her team approached that was directly soliciting the information from every teacher through the Google form. That's not something in, in years past that, that we did. Um, so the level of communication around the Wednesday, um, structure is really comprehensive and persistent. And um, to the point where teachers are like, I thought I recommended a kid on a Wednesday and I didn't see him in. And you know, so there's a lot of collaboration, communication around that. Um, you know, I, earlier the questions related to like, where are we seeing kids struggle? I think it's up and down the continuum. Um, you know, I overheard a conversation with Leanna earlier today about an adept student that was refusing to come to school and the, her running out to do a home visit for that. That is unique. That's not something that we're used to seeing. And I think it's a byproduct of this environment. Um, and then on the high end of the scale, the pressure that our upper level students are feeling to perform and to in many regards, do a lot of self-instruction because of the pace of instruction in AP classes. Um, we've seen some modification. A lot of our AP level teachers are teaching synchronously because they were just notified by the college board that the assessments will be complete. They won't. Last year they shaved off a couple of units of, of instruction. Uh, but they've determined that based on the national trends, that they can't align the unit structure because there's a lack of, um, consistency across the United States and how it's, um, implemented, that they're going to go through the full assessment. And so, you know, that puts a lot of pressure on teachers and for students. So, um, you know, again, to the point uh, that a lot of people had talked about, are, we're seeing a lot of struggle in our, in our virtual students. Um, and to that, to that end, again, Leanna's been extremely persistent in bringing those families back. And uh, more back to your point earlier, Tim, our ELL families, as soon as we saw the spike happen, they, they were right back out the door. Um, I think they, they're very fearful and the communication is always a challenge and making sure that they truly understand uh, what's going on in the school and what's going on out of the school. Um, so I'll let Leanna speak a little bit to the function of things, um, because again, she's been the architect of many of the, the systems that, that that kind of trickled down and, and really of aligned everyone. Um, but I would say in terms of what we see as an impact on the budget, um, I anticipate that no matter what we come through with at this point, because of the gap from last spring and from the fall, and because we're at the tail end of the um, of the process, that we're going to have more kids not graduate on time. And we're going to be supporting, um, those students either through Alt Ed or through summer, um, through summer school. Um, I anticipate potentially, um, overloading the BOSI summer school model. And there's been conversation amongst the county principals about what that's going to look like. And so I, I do see that having an impact on the budget process. If we were to hold, I, I would anticipate based on the failure numbers that we've seen so far, that we might be able to operate our own summer school. Um, but that's something that is going to have to take a lot of communication and a, assessment as we go through the spring. But, um, a lot of our teachers already teach within the BOSI summer school. And so we have a fairly good handle on that and, and what we'll need. Um, and whether we do that through our Alt Ed program or um, summer school, the, the issue for us of course, is that we just run out of time. And so we, the clock is ticking for a lot of kids towards graduation. Um, we all have more senior failure meetings than we've ever had before. And uh, we're going to do everything we can to kind of put a, put a stop to that. But we definitely have, I would say. But we definitely have, I would say, at many, at least it's twice as many students as we typically have that are kinda throwing their hands up and thinking like that it's, you know, that they just don't have it in them right now to do what they need to do to graduate. And so that's very concerning to us and we'll literally stop at nothing to turn that around and try to bring them back into the fold.
Think about this, we've seen kids, I'm guesstimating 20 times and it's January, right? I mean, that, yeah, think about the gaps there and, you know, what's getting done and how you're able to motivate a kid when they're in school versus out of school. I think we're experiencing all that.
Go ahead.
I guess some of the things I just wanted to highlight, and I'll be quick about this piece of it. We have most of our ENL population back, right? We did see a little bit of an exit there, but the bulk of them are back. We have the most students we've ever had four days a week. We have 76 students right now coming to school four days a week. And that ranges from special education students to kids who are at risk, to students whose families are like, they can't sustain the inconsistency in their household. And it's the kids are really tripping and struggling.
Leanna, those kids that come back four days a week, are they just repeating? Like they're on a Monday, Thursday, when they go to their Tuesday, Friday classes, are they just repeating the same classes?
In some cases, yes, and in some cases, no. In some cases, you know, when it's synchronous instruction that's happening, they're getting the new content every day that they're there. When it is what you might call a repeat, it's actually really an opportunity for the student to have a structured space to do the work they would be doing at home.
Okay.
Right? So it gives them access to their teacher, it gives them the environment they need to be productive.
Okay.
So, so yeah, so we have 76 students in that model right now. Fewest number of virtual students we've had all year, which is good news even in the middle of the current spike that we're in. To Pat's point earlier, like families are recognizing that this is really difficult. And the students who even are being successful in the virtual model are like, I can't do this at home alone anymore. Like I need to be with my peers, I need to be with my teachers, even the ones who are okay are reaching out and saying, how do I come back? Right? So thankfully, as of yet, we've not had to turn anyone away for being at capacity, right? Like we've been able to make that work thus far, which is a good feeling. The only other thing that I wanna talk about, I guess two things. One, outside of what everybody else is doing in terms of like home biz, like just killing yourself, right? Trying to make it better for each student that you come across. The at-risk document that we send out weekly absolutely offers up every week a different intervention so that the teachers aren't getting bored of it and aren't feeling like it's stale and it's not working. And like, we gotta keep trying different things. So yes, the Wednesday guided study hall, but it could be anything from like, okay, should we talk about a cohort change for this student? Should we do a parent meeting? Should we talk about getting this student into RTI on a regular basis, right? So each week we try to offer up a different intervention that maybe will work this time, right? And if we're seeing the same students over and over again, then the conversation becomes, what do we do to elevate the situation now, right? What do we need to do to see some signs of improvement? And so the last thing I guess that I'll share that we haven't really talked much about is that we are all really working hard to move kids towards that bar. But at the same time, although we don't talk about it quite as much, we are also really actively trying to lower the bar to some extent, reasonably. Because it doesn't make any sense, in my opinion, to expect that kids are gonna be able to do the things they're supposed to be able to do every other year. It's just not the case, it's not every other year. And so I think to help families feel like, of course, they're struggling, right? And it's our job to be receptive to that and to figure out where do we lighten the load a little bit? Whether that's our seniors who aren't taking a full course load, whether that's a student who's like, you know what, this elective's gonna have to wait this year, I can't do it this year, I'm gonna wait till next year. We're trying to figure out ways to lower the expectation, not just with course requirements, but within the classes they're taking. Dom mentioned it earlier, accepting the late work. And let's talk about meeting a standard, not teaching the lesson about turning something in on time. That's not the year for it, right? So we're really trying to figure out a way to blend these things, like where should kids be moving towards? But like, where should our expectation be? Like, how do we marry those two things so this makes a little bit more sense for everyone?
If I could jump, oh, sorry, Damon, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, that's, that's a great point. And not only does that hit the release valve for students, but parents and our staff as well, right? Because we have a lot of staff members that think that this is just another year of the same expectations, but it's just not, it's just not possible.
We have to remind one another at every opportunity that like all of the like grace and latitude and flexibility we afforded one another at the start of the school year when this was really new and hard, like that hasn't changed. That hasn't changed, everybody needs to know that that is something that they're being afforded. Our teachers, our paras, our secretary, everybody, our students, our parents, regular reminders that like this is not, the ease of it has not changed.
Very well said, I think, sorry, are we all jumping in?
Go ahead.
Very well said, you know, our teachers, they're built to prepare their students for next year. Regardless, if the Regents comes out and says there's no Regents exam, it's not gonna give them a break because they're gonna wanna get their kids ready for next year. That's just how educators are wired. So I don't know if it's just philosophical conversations. We somehow have to give our teachers that grace or to let them loosen their reins a little bit. And just a shout out to, side note, similar note, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. Shout out to Leanna and Bob, we're building an Alt Ed program in the ninth grade for the first time, like right now. And then shout out to Doug and Brett as well, I brought the idea to them and they were all in. And Bob and Leanna have been very great in helping me build the model that aligns to the 10, 11, 12 building and off sharing resources. So that's something that's gonna help, I think, five to 10 of our most at-risk kids academically and socially this year. But we'll have to, talking about budgets, you know, plan that for future. We can Band-Aid it in the short term, but again, the biggest piece is thank you and how do we give each other, all of us, more grace, especially our teachers? Because they're working themselves hard to help the kids, but sometimes it's like chasing our tails.
Dom, another thing that I think is really important, you know, and we certainly have this in common when we talk about what do we do moving forward? I never wanna lose sight of the middle-of-the-road kid who isn't, right? Like flaming out and we're all super concerned about. I don't wanna lose sight of those kids who are middle-of-the-road or higher-end kids who are still struggling. There will be no worse feeling moving into the summer or next school year to have to say to a parent or a student who's having a hard time, who wants help. And we say, I don't have room for you in RTI, I don't have room for you to get this extra help. Maybe next quarter, maybe in the next five weeks, right? Like that is not a good feeling as an educator when you have a family who's engaged, invested, and you can't make it happen. So as far as resources go, it's something we have to be really mindful of. Not just our kids who are credit deficient, we crush that all day, we know how to do that, right? We know how to make that work for kids and get them back on track. But it's these kids who are gonna be skill deficient are just plodding along and in need of something to help fill that gap again.
Well, just one more thing to add on to that budget-wise, because I think that lead teachers will be coming at us in this, in this spring season to talk about how do they modify curriculum, knowing that the kids have come in with a truncated experience. And so we are, you know, talk about lowering the bar, we've talked about teaching to 85% of that curriculum. And that might get, that might get them through the assessment in a real positive way, but at the same time, might create a stumbling block for a foundational course for next year. And so if you've missed out on 15% of the curriculum because that's all we had time to do, you know, kids are gonna come into, and you name the class, it's not gonna matter. You know, foundational math principles that benefit them in chemistry, something like that. So we're gonna have those gaps that they have to modify their curriculum to adjust and make sure that that first unit in September, going back to what Brett was saying earlier, is how do we meet them where they are? Which is knowing that they've had not just one interruption, a major interruption last year and then an entire year of truncated curriculum.
Little school standpoint, you know, that lowering our expectations, I know it's just semantic, but we had a great faculty meeting in October when I found out that teachers on their own were teaching, you know, four days a week and they were doing videos and having kids teach themselves. And I basically said to the staff, it's not lowering expectations, it's how do we teach to the bar knowing that the kids are only in our classrooms two days a week? So I basically said, as your principal, I'm giving you the teacher jurisdiction, if you will, discretion to not cover the entire curriculum. Again, I'm not Regents-driven, like Minerva in the high school is. I got her science, I got algebra and four language. Most of my courses are not credit-bearing. But how do we teach to the bar with the reality that we see these kids two days a week? And I tell you, that was a great faculty meeting, I've got some teachers that said, thank you. Thank you for just giving me the permission to not do what I did last year. How the hell can you do what you did last year when those kids are in your classes two days a week? And again, this is my criticism.
We as a board, Dave, we had this conversation back in, I think, June or July saying, you know, we have to make sure that our teachers are totally aware that we're not expecting 100% coverage. We, you know, it's a new bar and we have to meet the bar, like you said, it's a new bar. You know, this is something that's gonna go on for the next four or five years. It's gonna be four or five years before the children worldwide, not just in Fairport, New York, this is worldwide, are able to get back to where we as adults feel they should be, which I hate to say because each child advances at his or her own pace. And I think this is kind of really opening our eyes to that more so.
I think pragmatically, I think that there's no way the state can hold the Regents exams this year, there's just no way. And that's the same with the Common Core exams, it would be a disaster. And I just, I don't see how, I mean, I know they haven't officially come out and said anything, but I think they will, there's just no way they can run those.
Damon, I'm sure you know this already, but the states already come out to essentially waive even lab requirements already to say like, hey, that's usually a standard. Not anymore, like schools now have the ability to waive that requirement.
Yep, so I think it's really, really, I mean, we have to reach right deep down into the individual teachers and say, back off, like you need to lighten up because it's, we cannot accomplish what we normally do. And I think like Dave, you talked about 85%, like I think we would all be, like, we'd be so lucky if we were able to get 85%. I think there's no way we'd even get that high. You know, just doing the best we can, maintaining sanity and keeping the mental health of the kids engaged with the schools is important.
I was curious, Leanna and Bob, were the science teachers receptive to not doing the same amount of lab hours? I know, I feel that some are making changes, but some are not, so I was just curious.
Definitely think, I definitely think there's a continuum there. You know, I think that the problem that they have is they don't know what the end looks like. And, you know, last spring when Regents exams were waived and we talked about teaching for the love of the game, like there was a collective sigh of relief. And I know what, I believe what Dom's saying is that they don't teach to the test, they teach for next year. But at the same time, they do feel a certain amount of pressure to get, you know, going back to Leanna's comment about lab hours. Like, you know, that lab hours, they need to get those in, that kinda thing. I think you would see more of that concern in math where they, you know, are teaching synchronously specifically because they know they wanna get to a certain place by the end of the year.
Well, I guess I'll keep harassing the Board of Regents. I hope they tell us sooner than later.
From a budgetary perspective, curriculum management, possible summer school, social emotional programming pieces, more to follow on that, I appreciate you shedding some important light. We can continue this and we will be and will be definitely be bringing more stakeholders into the conversation with staff members who have ideas as well as it moves to budget season. But thank you for your time and thank you for, you know, taking your first night back and spending it.
Here, in a 30-minute presentation that turned out to be an hour and a half, thank you all.
You guys are welcome to stay on for a bit or sign off, thank you very much, everybody.
Congratulations to the new posts and happy new year.
Congrats, have a great night.
Next on the agenda, next on the agenda is the budget update. Matt, Brett, I do know that we have a finance, audit and finance committee meeting coming up on Wednesday.
They're all dropping off, Tim, I don't get it, they don't wanna stick around for this?
Damon, I'll tell you.
So it's early in the budget season and I'm glad that we've been talking about budget, whether it be our goals, whether it be what we just talked about, you know, some long-range, short-term expectations for budget. But Matt's gonna take a little bit of time to share with you where we are in the calendar and relative to the budget season, not really a lot of fiscal news to share at this point in time, other than what you already know. But Matt, are you still here?
Thank you.
Did you see that?
Yes. Yeah, so I mean, in the budget process, we do have audit and finance committee meeting this week to go over a couple of the other 19, 20-year-end audit pieces, extracurricular activities and the single audit for the grant pieces and claims audits. The calendar itself, we're coming up on the workshop in February where we'll start talking about the general support pieces in the budget that would primarily be the administrative offices, transportation, buildings and grounds, related BOSI services that are, that are related to our technology support and those pieces, our own tech team. So those are the main pieces that we would talk about there as well as the benefits that are in the debt service that would fall in the general support, non-instructional budget area. So and then we'll talk about that more at the board meeting, present on that at the February board meeting as well. So that's the main piece of the upcoming budget pieces. We've started getting back some information from the buildings related to just their supply equipment, textbook budget lines that would flow directly at the school buildings and then the other department budgets related to instructional sites. We'll start gathering that information, putting together. Started my meetings today with one of the principals. So we'll be moving through those in the next few weeks here on those pieces.
Thank you, Matt, questions, comments?
Question here, in terms of our, this calendar definitely follows our normal process. We just heard from a group of administrators who say definitely not a normal year and this budget cycle will reflect that even if the calendar is fairly normal, more or less. But I think many times we're presented, most of the time, right, we're presented with here's last year's and if we, we just did the same thing, you know, so come February 1st, so I'm just wondering if it, you know, Brett, Matt, anything that we're already hearing, what is it we're gonna need in the summertime if we're gonna have to enhance transportation for summer school at every building? You know, what's additional cost, probably earlier is better, getting an idea of what that would cost, how long it's gonna have to be sustained, obviously, is it multiple summers? Where we'd want summer school at every building for three years until, Tim, you mentioned could be three or four years till the students are finally caught up to where we think they should be? Or is it a one-time summer? Just trying to get an idea of what indeed we might need to expect from our fund balance, our reserves. These are one-time, I call them one-time, but is it one-time for four years or one-time for two years, one-time for one year, right? But sooner or later, we won't be able to sustain this in perpetuity, I don't think. We just don't have that ability to increase taxes accordingly. But I think we need to get an idea as soon as possible of the types of new cost centers or added expenses in current cost centers so we can look out multiple years and see how we manage that.
Brett and Matt, when it comes to summer school, we do pay BOSIs a certain stipend for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because yeah, I mean, going on what Peter said, you know, that stipend, if we decide to do our own in-house, we'd have to, we already have X amount of dollars apportioned for that. So I'm sure there would be an increase because, and like you said, Peter, who knows how many years this would be for?
Peter, probably be, you know, starting out with a multiplier, right? And just trying to calculate out with that. And then as we move through the season, understanding what those numbers actually are, we'll be able to definitely hone them in. But that was the beauty about tonight and what we started last month, actually, is just starting to have this conversation sooner so we're not looking to do this in May. So yeah, I think, you know, having a multiplier and just sort of, you know, doing the math on like what Aaron said and doing it at each building and what would that take just to sort of ballpark it? And then you take a look at your end of the year projected fund balances and understand how that will impact it.
I have a question and it's for everyone, I don't have any idea where to begin this. But with the rent relief that the governor has since extended, that's rent. When it comes to mortgages, is there any relief for mortgage payment? And in doing so, most mortgages have an escrow account for their taxes. And if your mortgage payment has been. And if your mortgage payment has been. Forgiven for a while, what does that do to collection of taxes through your mortgage payment? I'm just wondering how that all is going to flesh out.
Has there been such an amendment, Matt? I haven't.
I'm, I haven't heard. I'm not aware of anything right now.
Okay. So right now it's just for rent as opposed to mortgages?
No evictions, yeah.
And have we heard anything more about those, the look backs? Where they're going to tell us whether they're going to give us the amount of money that we expected?
If you, I, not that you would, because who listens to me anyways? When I did my report last month, the governor actually did speak to the fact of. How he's waiting to see what we get from the states. And then once he, state, excuse me, federal government. And once, once he figures that out, then he'll pass that on to the state. And he says he could do it now and cut his 20%. Or wait until things sort of transition with the new administration to, to make that. And that's what he wants to do. He's waiting. So we don't have definitive on that. You know, based upon what he shared.
And, and I honestly believe that's why he's changed his whole methodology of how to. Determine whether an area should be shut down because he's seeing how important the economy is to keeping his coffers. At least something in them, you know, during the holiday season, shopping has been pretty brisk. Again, the last sales tax allotment really wasn't much off the mark that we anticipated. And compared to last year, it was only a few percentage points below. But we'll see how this works, you know, because he knows that right now the economy in, in New York is so dependent on shopping. Now, I, I had the question this morning in our meeting about the food service budget, you know, we had over $750,000 in that account when we started the school year. And with all of the free lunches, everyone receiving free food. And Brett reminded me that it was a federal reimbursement. We're going to get to a point where that, we're down to about 170,000, I think, in that account. And that won't last too much longer. And then we're going to have to start. Going to other accounts to make sure that we continue to fund that. And then when we get our reimbursement from the federal government, if and when, whatever number that is, we don't know. You know, that's one more budgetary item that is going to hit us in the face and that could be half a million dollars.
So the goal is to get it out on the table early and often. Talk about it with the board, obviously prioritize it with the board, process with the community to help narrow in on those priorities. So. Definitely more to speak to, but Judy, I do feel that it's going to be a nail biter and he's gonna. You know, for his reasons, hold out and see what happens as the administration turns over and then. He'll pass that on to us once he learns more, but it'll be a nail biter, it won't be any simple, easy answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So that brings us to our next agenda item, which is to take a break for a few minutes and go into an executive session to discuss. Items pertaining to. Appointment of an individual to the Board of Education due to an upcoming vacancy. And I do want to let the audience who is watching know that we will not be holding that live. We will be holding that in a separate Zoom. And when we reconvene out of that executive session, we will not be taking any action. The only action we will be taking is to. Adjourn this meeting. So we will not be coming back to this format. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to enter executive session, please. Marty, second choice, all in favor? Aye. Okay, that's seven zero. So shall we reconvene in about 10 minutes? Does that give everyone a chance to take a break? Stoke the fire, feed the dogs, do what you need to do. And we will reconvene at 6:38. Now we will go to our executive session, let's say at, at 6:50. And we will have that conversation, then we will adjourn from that particular meeting. See you in a few minutes. And Brett, you sent that extra link, correct? Great. Thank you. See you in a few minutes.
Take care, everybody.
Bye, Matt. Thank you. Thank you, Doug.